The problem that we're working on each and every day is trying to, you know, cut the hunger out from our young people that attend school on a day-to-day basis. Many people don't realize that, you know, they classify our kids as at-risk, but don't realize sometime our kids go without meals day in and day out. And if we can provide meals to our kids and families, then kids can concentrate and be able to think better when they're in school.
While the governor and superintendent announced students would not be returning to school, programs that feed students are expected to continue.
After announcing the school feeding program was done, it is on again. Jefferson County Schools began providing meals for students who may not eat otherwise.
Two districts ending their meal distribution programs, one now probably stepping up in a big way to make sure the kids are fed while school is up.
Kickstarter says their mission is to help out those most vulnerable in our community. And now with tools out and meal distribution programs ending because of COVID-19, they realize that their responsibility has increased tremendously. So we spoke with Kickstarter founder Dr. Bedlam Jackson. He tells me they're now working with Jefferson County, Birmingham City Schools, Fairfield, and the Birmingham Housing Authority.
Kickstarter Inc. was giving out free meals Wednesday at Brighton Elementary, cars lined up to get those meals and cartons of milk. Another three was just happy to see the return of the program.
It's great for the community to get your, um, Galaxy Black.
That was a few clips that we put together in reference to our program Kickstarter. I just want to first and foremost say I just want to thank God and for the blessing that he's bestowed upon me to be able to be here today. And I give all honor and praise to him. For him, being nothing would be possible. I want to personally thank Commissioner Tyson for her having confidence in what we do as a program and to bring service to this great city, this great county. I lived off of this program as a young kid. I grew up in Ensley and it was the only meal I used to get when I used to go down to Mac Alpine. Parents died at a very young age, left me when I was seven years old. Grandparents raised me. Favorite special school called Miles College Overbound Program picked me up, got me through high school, got me seventeen scholarships, went on to go to school in Kentucky, went on to receive my doctor's degree. Kickstarter was founded in Phoenix, Arizona after I retired from Department of Defense providing intel for the government for twenty-one years. I came back home to visit and I saw that the same meals that I was getting thirty-five years ago was still being distributed today. I wanted to make a difference. I felt that our kids and our communities needed to have better meals, be provided higher nutritional, and give quality in the food boxes and the things that they receive. We've been part of the Alabama Department of Education program for the last two and a half years in the state of Alabama, but we've been also part of that program in Arizona. We have worked the Meals on Wheels program both in Arizona. Our goal here in Alabama is to continue to serve our kids in the county areas. Our true dream is to serve our kids throughout the black belt of the state of Alabama where the greatest needs are there. Our families suffer each and every day. They go to bed without meals. In this day and age, it should not be that type of suffering. In this day and age, we're one of the wealthiest countries in America, we should be feeding our kids high caliber meals. We should be feeding our seniors and family members high caliber meals. We should be teaching our families how to eat nutritionists with people having high blood pressure, diabetes. It's time that we reach out as a community and start preparing the type of menus that are going to be healthy for them. I had the pleasure today of bringing some of the meals that we package and we serve. They're out in the hallway there. We do pastas and we use chicken fajitas, we do vegetable wraps, we do turkey wraps, we do chicken salads, and we don't believe in processed food. We believe that we can cook a chicken, skin that chicken, process that chicken in our own kitchen, and make a quality chicken salad. It don't have to be fried, it don't have to be baked. We've got to start thinking about our health. We're in a serious situation now in America, and I think the healthiest peoples are the ones that'll survive in the best by eating properly, eating right. Kickstarter and our family wish and hope that we continue to be able to bring service to this community, quality service. We want to change the old way of doing things. We want to package our food because we have a socioeconomic disadvantage, family or youth, there's no reason they shouldn't get high-quality meals. And that's what I respect so much about our commissioner and our community there. And these commissioners sitting here today, I want to be able to help every one of these communities in the county to be able to serve these high-quality meals to our families and our kids. We're about uplift, we're about perseverance, and we're about friendship of a quality program. We thank you for your time. I answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you very much.
How long did you say Kickstarter's been around?
We've been around for twenty-two years. We've been in Alabama for two and a half years. This program was started in the back of a small church in Arizona, providing after-school meals for programs in the state of Arizona. We've been associated and providing meals for the Department of Education and area on aging for twenty-two years. The program for area agency on aging is a program that's the Meals on Wheels program in the state of Arizona. And so, and we're still under contract with them. We've been with area agents Meals on Wheels for now about twelve years, but we've been associated with the federal and state Department of Education for twenty-two now. And we are USDA certified in what we do. We not only prepare food, but we train and teach the nutritional aspect of how our people should eat.
I'd like to say when I was assigned the project that tried to help with the feeding program in Jefferson County, this program is stood out above all in a goal over racial boundaries. All he's trying to do is make sure children and senior citizens get quality food. It doesn't matter where you live at. He's in Clay Chapel, he's in areas that you would think wouldn't need these type of products and foods, but they do. Now, the food is quality. He have to purchase the food, the food is displayed on the table, you see, what's the name, what's that meat that, you have chicken?
We have chicken salads out there, we have fajita, chicken pasta salads out there today. We're doing, we have wraps, we have vegetable wraps and turkey wraps, fajita wraps. So we do a variety of things with the wraps and the various types of meat.
And the uncooked food that you have, that you give to the seniors and the parents?
The uncooked meals that we give to the seniors is, we have our dry boxes considered grits, we have the canned meats, such as the beef that they issue, mashed potatoes, cheese, tuna fish, and a lot of the meals in the cans you see, the fruits, the vegetables, they are from major distribution companies, they're not outdated. We take very, a lot of pride in the fact that we're able to give our clients fresh food within dates, and we just take a lot of pride in that. And the chicken fajitas and stuff like that, that stuff comes from Tyson Food. There are commodities that are issued through USDA. However, we're not, you know, fortunate enough to receive this stuff free. We go out and we purchase it for so much a pound to distribute it. We were blessed for the first time with a donation from Jamison Winston, who's now with the New Orleans Saints, that recognized what we were doing and gave us the first donation that we have ever received within our program. Alabama Power have reached out and gave us a small donation. So for the first time, and that's what makes me so proud to be a citizen of this county, is that families and business are reaching out and assisting us. We're partnering with the East of Seal Corporation, we're partnering with Pastor Davis over in Wileham that has association with over a hundred and forty churches. Public gives us six hundred and fifty pounds of bread every single day, not outdated bread, but bread that's ready to use along with pastry, pastries. My son, the other day, he helps me a lot, and he went out and he was at West Jefferson, and he had cookies that was designed in the shape of a heart from Publix, and he presented it to a lady, and she broke down in tears because someone had gave her something. But I think it was the heart that showed the love that was presented to her, you know, so.
Thank you so much. How many people are you serving right now, Dr. Jackson?
We serve over ten thousand breakfasts and ten thousand lunches every single day. We start every morning at four o'clock and we end our day at seven o'clock. We have volunteers from various organizations that come in and help us. We've been so gracious that Calhoun High School has given us their cafeteria to work from along with our own personal cafeteria that we serve from, and Daniel Payne has extended their facility for us. We're talking to Miles College about using their facility until the kids come back to school. So we're reaching out and we're trying to reach every segment of our communities. The beauty of our program, we have food service trucks that go out where, it's like an ice cream truck, somebody can drive up and a meal could be given out to them at the truck. So we're trying to get more vehicles, we're trying to reach every segment of this community we can. But the most important thing is that our county, you know, our unincorporated citizens that live in those areas are hurting and suffering so much and going to bed each night without a meal. When we take the food out and give them out and for lunch and a breakfast for the next day, we take ten, fifteen food boxes on that truck to give to the needy families at that time when we're out there in those areas. West Jefferson, those places are, and Adamsville, you know, you know, Adamsville was a very needy community, and we've been able to work with the mayor and serve about a hundred and seventy-five kids a day out there that wasn't being served at that time.
And you're in Tarrant and is it Fulton?
Fulton Dale, Tarrant, Brighton, we're just about in all our.
Ensley.
Ensley, Hurry Town. And it's been a tremendous task to take on. We just, you know, continue for blessings of good health, and we've had good staff that have remained healthy to help us prepare those meals, and they've been very dedicated in what they're doing each and every day.
Thank you so much, Dr. Jackson.
Thank you, thank you.
And as you can see that we are covering all five districts over Jefferson County, and I think they are doing a good job. This is just one of the feeding programs that we are doing. And I represent as a county, not an individual, when I went and talked to Dr. Jackson, I told him I was representing Jefferson County. And we are also, it's the Fresh Wood Farmers Feeding Family Program also. So I just wanted to make sure everyone got, and we have samples out in the hallway. When you're leaving, there are like TV dinners, you can just pick it up and you can go back to your office and have a nice taste of the products that their citizens eat in Jefferson County. Thank you, President.
Thank you very much. Commissioner, next on the agenda, we have your minutes from your Mesa meeting. They were in our packet, are there any additional corrections or revisions to those minutes? Move that we dispense with the reading of the minutes and when Dr. Simmons raises?
Second.
Second, I'll, very much. Commissioner, you have the forty-two items resolution that were in two items new business. Did we not put that on the?
I thought we did.
I thought we put this on the.
I think we put the, I think we did the salary, but maybe not the contract.
We'll go ahead and out of the abundance of caution, we'll include these employment agreements and items of new business. So Commissioner, you have forty-two items resolution. Is there any particular items that Commissioner would like to have removed or separate vote or consideration?
I'll move items one through forty-two.
Motion number seven, I'll favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Commissioner, you have the forty-two items of new business, including employment contracts. There for Mr. Nigel Roberts and Ms. Dixon. I move that we consider the two new items for business by the chairman's consent. Motion number seven, Steve Laverde, please call her up.
Commissioner Annes?
Yes.
Commissioner Mike?
Aye.
Commissioner Stiles?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Stevens?
Yes. Chair will entertain a motion for the consideration of two employment agreements, move one and two.
Second.
Motion number seven, again, Steve Laverde.
Commissioner Annes?
Yes.
Commissioner Mike?
Aye.
Commissioner Stiles?
Yes.
Commissioner Tyson?
Yes.
Commissioner Stevens?
Yes. Thank you very much. Barry, you come up with a second with a wide order, let me bury Theo and then tell you in this committee.
Okay. Good morning, everyone. You know, when I last spoke Tuesday, I informed you all of the election commission meeting that was going to be held. Yesterday morning was a very productive meeting, lots of things discussed about. You know, one of the first things, the commission was, the election commission was very interested in the opportunity to make the precincts feel safe and to sanitize them, and so they forwarded a motion and so to check into those processes, and that process is underway. We're going to get that and then turn it over to the county manager. I also want to thank county manager and county attorney for having representation there also. So, but that process is underway. It's not something you can just snap your fingers. We have a hundred and seventy-five precincts, some are large, some are small, and we're just going to sanitize there and we vote in, but that's underway. The election commission also was interested in this expanding possibly to the satellite courthouses or a remote absentee process, but since that's a legal matter, they're going to wait to hear from the county attorney. I've discussed briefly with him, and he is on top of that, and we'll hear from him. Training of poll workers was a big, big topic, and if you go onto our polls, you know the average age of our poll workers are senior adults. And so there's a concern about bringing them all in, could we have, normally we conduct large poll worker schools the week before the election. So we're going to approach that in a different manner. We have a training room out at our operations center in Tarrant, so we're going to bring them in in small groups so we can be properly separated and still cover all the material. And we're also going to video that so we can send that out to those who maybe under abundance of caution don't come, or if they come and they just want to watch it again and again and again, if you can't get enough training. So we're going to approach that. We're going to actually have the, do that for July, and if there's any kinks, we'll work through that, and so we'll be a little sharper if we need to be leading in November. But out of an abundance of caution, we're going to go that route. The procurement of the personal protection equipment is underway, and that's what either our purchasing department or what vendors are approaching, either the election commission or they're approaching the county manager's office now, and that covers the whole gamut, whether that's masks, sanitizer, wipes, sprays, all that. So that procurement is underway. If any of y'all have not visited the Election Day Call Center, I would recommend you do that. It's on the first floor, if you're heading down toward probate, it's on the left. That's kind of our brain center for problems and issues on Election Day, so we're going to have to reconfigure that a little bit. So that's also one thing that's underway, how to properly staff that, everyone can be in a safe environment, and we can field all the calls that come in today. So we have that, we have that area on Election Day, we have the board of registrars on Election Day, we have the probate office on Election Day, so several areas on Election Day where calls come into, so we can address any issue. And one thing that came up, just as a matter of a brief discussion, last year, we increased, no, it was right before the 2018 election, so some of y'all weren't here, but we increased the amount of our rent to the precincts. Not everyone pays rent, accepts rent, but the ones that do, we increased it up to a hundred dollars per election. And it had not been raised, I went back and checked, it hadn't been raised in like fifteen years when we did that in October of 2018. It was just a brief discussion, do we want to raise it a little bit again as a goodwill toward these facilities who are going to host hundreds and if not thousands of folks on Election Day? So that's something that would ultimately be your decision if we wanted to pay a hundred dollars per election right now. So it used to be only twenty-five, so a hundred was a big deal when we did that, if y'all recall, in October of 2018. So, but that would be your call, and I guess we would route that through the county manager's office to bring to y'all if y'all can decide.
I think that it would probably be beneficial during this time of the COVID crisis, and I think that it would be, it would be at least a temporary while replacing this, or at least the July election and the November election, to have a pretty good increase in that to help compensate for the trouble that it will be for the facility to do next to that. Mr. Joseph, would you give a very?
I can present a resolution for your next, to be on the agenda for your next committee meeting, I'll route it through the.
What do you think in terms of?
Well, right now it's a hundred, and this is just uncommon times. I'd say maybe two hundred and fifty for July and November is a sign that we're, and then again, we have a hundred and seventy-five precincts, I think only, it's less than sixty we pay rent to. So it's not a hundred and seventy-five times two hundred now. We only pay, it's less than sixty that we pay rent to, so.
Mr. President?
All right, go ahead. I'll see you, Joe.
So, let me ask you something, Mr. Stevens, with the Stevenson, excuse me.
I agree. Either one's better.
No, that's okay, we call you by your name. What the rent, this little hundred dollar fee, what does that cover currently anyway?
It's, we just pay them for the use of their facility, like I said, it's less than sixty precincts that actually accept rent, so.
The only reason why I'm asking is because, I was thinking what the president was mentioning anyway, you can't require certain sanitations and things that are required as a result of what we're going through, and then not kind of monitor that within what you're paying these folks. In fact, the reason why I'm asking is because some people are not even interested, especially poll workers and different folk like that. I mean, holistically, we're probably going to have to come up with something pure because, you know, we get this second wave, which is what is anticipated, a lot of our seniors who traditionally will work these polls, they're staying at home. And so, and I know that for a fact, so that being the case. As President, I would say that we also need to look at a holistic approach in terms of not just rent, but what we should be looking at as relates to workers who are going to man these phones and so forth in light of COVID-19. I'm not saying that that's something we have to continue, I'm just saying that our behavior has changed as a result of it. So I'd like to see something that's more holistic than just a rent increase, that if you can also stipulate in your resolution exactly what our needs are that are totally different than what they've been previously, I'd be interested in that.
Okay, and I think, yes, yes ma'am.
And I'm sure we do have money for that. We would not want to suppress the vote.
Right. One thing that came up yesterday, it was brought up, Tony's representation, was that, like, we're moving forward on getting these bids for sanitizing these facilities, that's reimbursable from the state's COVID-19 fund that the state was allocated, so that'll be reimbursable back to the county, things of that nature. But from a, you know, holistic standpoint, I would, some of that I would defer to the county attorney. Can we actually supplement the poll workers, you know, they get paid X amount, whether it's, you know, I'm off top, they have a hundred and seventy-five dollars, can we go above and beyond that as a county to our Jefferson County poll workers?
I was just getting to the.
A hundred and seventy-five. I think it's a hundred and seventy-five for a worker, maybe two twenty-five for the chief. I'm close to that, if I'm off, I'm off like twenty-five dollars, but from a legal perspective, I'll take a look at it. Okay.
And even with the workers, we need, they're at a table with no type of plexiglass or anything, and they're, the people are directly on them, even with the computer system that they have now where you scan your driver's license, they still have to communicate with the person at that desk, and that is a hazardous thing, I feel like.
Yes, ma'am.
And do you put plexiglass up or anything?
The election commission is looking at those proposals. It may be from a functional standpoint that they get the, those clear face guards, not necessarily, because when you're dealing with a plexiglass, you're going to have to have something, let's say this is the iPad that you post.
It's interactive, so it's hard to do.
Yes, so it's going to be hard, but if they have the face mask, that's essentially their own personal.
Space.
Shield. So that was brought up yesterday.
Have you made decisions on whether the people coming to the boxes to vote can wear masks, since you have to show ID, how would they know that's the person?
Well, the county's not monolithic, so I don't know if we can make, like, right now, I think the city of Birmingham has, you know, most wore masks in the city of Birmingham. I don't think we can make them, but the election commission did talk about, in a very extensive media outlay, to emphasize to the public as we get closer to July fourteenth, and after July fourteenth, we'll be turning over municipalities. We have over thirty municipalities who will have elections in August, emphasize to the voting public, please wear a mask, please be considerate, and I think by and large most will. And then, so, and we can see what's successful, what we need to tweak from July, the predicted turnout from Adam Martin Gump from the Secretary of State, I believe, is between eight and ten percent. So it's going to be low turnout, there's not much on the ballot, but they're predicting eight to ten percent. That's a lot of, so we'll be able to see what works at a smaller scale before we, and then we'll have the municipal elections, some will, some might have a lot, big. we, and then we'll have the municipal elections. Some will, some might have a lot, big, large turnout like Hoover and some, some of these smaller cities. But we'll be able to have two elections underneath our belt to help implement, tweak, change whatever we need to do because we know November's going to be a large election. And it's going to be multifaceted. If we can expand our sites perhaps absentee voting, that may, that can help take pressure off on actual election day in November. If we see we need different kinds of personal protection equipment or extra, whatever it is, we can then implement that for the larger election. So, it was a very good meeting, very productive. There's a lot of things underway to get in place by July fourteenth and I'm feeling very good about that. So, just going to have to be a lot of follow-up and there will be. And we're all working together. It's probate, it's the sheriff, circuit clerk, it's the county manager, the commission, board of registrars, county attorney. So, things are in motion and so we hope it just continues to go well.
Thank you, Barry.
If we do expand those access to absentee voting sites, when would we have to, I guess, have some kind of legal opinion as to whether we can and then when would we?
Here's what came up yesterday from that. Both Jackie Smith, who's the Birmingham division circuit clerk, and Karen Dunberg were involved in the meeting yesterday and they both gave the reports. And right now, they're not seeing very much absentee. Again, this is unique because it should have been by March thirty-first. It got postponed. Some people aren't paying attention again, but I figured it'll ramp up by mid-June all the way till we get to July fourteenth. But they're not seeing, so we're not talking about expanding this for the July fourteenth runoff. But, and so, the presumption, what if we could expand it? Then you start working backwards. You say, okay, well, what does the staffing that look like? So, if you got an extra staff, what does that cost look like? So, if you have battle taking place, what does that security look like? And if you have security there, what does that chain of command into, you know, do you have a safe there? Do you transport it down to the Birmingham courthouse or the Vecima courthouse at the end of each day? So, there's a lot of incremental steps that will, those dominoes will fall once we know if we can do that. And that, of course, there'll be some, there'll be funds involved with that. There'll be costs. So, that was discussed briefly. It's already, you know, we talked about it at the initial phase. If we get the green, if the green, if that's green lighted, then we can put those costs together. Jackie and Karen, they know what their costs are running their absentee, so we can extrapolate that model out if we're able to do that.
So, that's on our November election.
Thank you. So, what I'm asking for, Tony, is really more of a comprehensive outline of where you're going to be. We're in a fiscal changeover, which we know you're talking about the July and August, and then that will be for this year. And then, we hopefully should have approved the budget by the time we have the November election. So, I think it would be more prudent and time-sensitive and efficient if we know exactly what we're dealing with, at least an approximate figure, so we'll know how much money we've got to spend, what we can anticipate. And then, we already, we should be having budget discussions, whether individually or collectively, and so we need to know what November looks like. I, the reason why I'm asking upfront is because I think we'd be more accomplished when we deal with it holistically than individually. And so, if we know what we're having to deal with, know what can be anticipated, okay, not that you want to think of everything, but at least those items of priority, then they should also have a money assigned to it. So, that's all I'm asking for. Now, if the commission as a whole doesn't want it, that's fine, but this one does. I want to know what the money is like.
And let me add this, Barry. I told you briefly this morning, the state is offering twenty-five dollars to poll workers statewide. So, they're going to be paying that. Also, there's a grant that we're applying for, for the elections. And so, with that and with the state's help, you know, we'll be able to hopefully put everything in place that we need to put in place.
And you put that in your report too?
Yes.
So that we know what type of applications that you're looking to do. I think that would be good too, Mr. President.
And I agree. I think that most of these funds are going to be coming from the state.
Reimbursed.
But reimbursed, it'll be reimbursed. And I don't know that there will be any impact on our general fund budgets from this at all. So, the budgetary process should and could begin now for that, so we can allocate those COVID funds for them.
Yeah. Let me speak to that point and your point. So, county manager, Justin's already done the olden's work on this along with Alexander Stevens from probate. They've already done a lot and they're doing it probably even as we speak right now on those costs. The August elections, we may even make a little money depending on the benevolence that we charge, you know, what it does cost. We own our own machines. We're one of few counties in the state that own our own machines. We'll lease those out and those agreements will start to come through. They'll come through general services, the agreements with all the counties to do their elections. And so, whether it's the machines, some cities may want to use the e-poll book. Some of the smaller cities will probably just use the old paper. But those contracts come through and we, we don't, we're not trying to make a profit. We usually make just a little bit. So, it's not going to really be a cost to the county. In the past, it hasn't. Now, there may be some cities, one of our cities just filed bankruptcy. That'll be a decision for y'all to decide what you want to do with those situations. But that'll be a municipal endeavor that we assist them with. And then, you're correct, the November election will be in a new budget year. And it's a presidential election, not a governor's election. So, it's the one out of every four years where all resources are usually taxed, not just at our level, but at a precinct level, use the facilities, parking lot, they have the access and exit of the parking lots, the traffic lights. So, there's a lot. That's the reason if we can possibly expand the satellite absentee, every boat that we can get cast there, it takes a pressure point off the precinct on election day.
How much do we charge per machine to the municipality?
It's, I believe it's four-hundred-and-fifty dollars per machine. And we program, that includes, you know, we'll program it. So, you know, City A and John Smith and Jane Doe are running for mayor and we'll program all that for them. So, that...
Can take you out, do it?
Yes. Yes. Yes, we, we.
It's really interesting. I wore some of the cops for that.
Yeah. And we, we have, you know, the, I talk to our city clerks all the time and so does Keith Harris and his group at the Oft Center. We have a good relationship with the cities. Very proud of that. Some counties and the municipalities don't. We do. I was actually in a long Zoom meeting yesterday afternoon with the city clerks meeting where they talked exclusively about the election. So, there's a lot of pre-planning going on and you should expect to see those contracts start to come through here in the next few weeks.
Really. I appreciate it. Thank you so very much.
Again, y'all, if y'all got a question, don't hesitate to call me or email me. So, thanks.
Thank you.
Uh, Attorney Lawson, do you have any?
No, nothing. We've got our work cut out for us both in this and November and with the COVID stuff, but nothing further.
Mr. Jones.
No, that's good.
You're good. Um, let's just go down the line. District one.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to say that we've got a lot of activity, a lot of activity that is going on. We're very excited about it. A lot of people are getting at least partially some of what they need in the community and I'm very excited about it. I think we'll be having more efforts and we'll be able to share. Most importantly, I'm encouraging everyone to stay as close to safe as you can, continue all of this six-foot social distancing. I know that there are going to be some graduation efforts. I understand that it's going to be taking place very soon and our students and everyone is very excited about the accomplishment. And we want everyone to know behalf of the county, how proud that we are to persevere during this interesting time. And I think that collectively together, we're going to get through it. So, I do want to thank you for that, Mr. President. That's all I have to say.
Mr. Josh.
Um, to let everyone know that we received a fifteen thousand dollar grant from the National League of Cities, or to help us with the census, and also we receive a five thousand dollar grant. So, we need our van where we can track it, where we can go to our locations that we need to, in order to raise the number. I'm going to read out again the places that we are covering. We're covering Tarrant, Sana Point, Lipscomb, Wright, Midfield, and Fairfield. They were assigned to us by the Census Bureau. They were one assigned into us. These are the areas that we are working in. The numbers are climbing up and we've got to really work in Lipscomb and Wright. We, they gave us a person, a Latino person, we're going to go in that area. We can't knock on doors, but there's some more things that we're going to go in that area with some different material and everything. And we're looking for a big spike in those numbers. I want to thank Helen for the work that she has done with us. I'm talking about a great job, Helen. You really have, you have done a great job and we really appreciate that. Also, we have a partnership with LIF and it's for the COVID-19 and we have given out over three-hundred-and-twenty-five dollar free rides. We gave them to Tahoe Healthcare and Cooper Green Arms, UAB Medical Center. They have received the free rides and they are using them. The family to, farmers to family feeding program site today, this is the first time in a long time that Vecima have received anything this large. So, they will be covering the whole cutoff and the city of Vecima today from eleven to twelve. And we will also be in max transit and max transit worked it out to where they can actually give it to their riders and their riders will be able to transport it on their bus, or they can make it home with the products. We're also doing, working with several programs for utility assistance and rental assistance. I want to make sure that everyone knows that some people are getting breaks on their rent and some people are not, and that they are wavering some fees for utilities, but they want their money. You know, they're going to end up on their money. So, it's regular stacking up. So, we are also working on that. And we do have milk and we have meat that will be coming in with the produce. So, I'll make y'all aware of that when it comes in. Thank you.
Thank you. We're just going down the line. I'll go next. First of all, I want to thank the county management team for their engagement and what they've done to get us through this crisis and maintain our county's services. It's been a great job. Thank you very much. I know it's been challenging and sometimes we've been difficult to work with, but we are all of the same thing and we will make sure that it gets done properly. A lot of those lines, I'd like to, so, read this letter. And this is to you, Cal, and Heather, but it's titled, "Hi Jimmy. I want to thank you for paving our road from April twenty-seventh to the thirtieth." And this is a little bit longer letter than that, but it's from someone down in the county of Ashby. So, I won't tell you what I did not officially pave this road, but the county did. But I, this is to reiterate that we get credit when it's because we're the elected official and we get blamed when it's not done properly because we are the elected official. And I want everyone to continue to work together. I want everyone to continue to be safe. We've got a holiday coming up, one night. We have been very fortunate in Jefferson County through those working with the county to have a low incidence of COVID infections. But we have, we have had some that's paid the ultimate sacrifice and we want to remember those families in our prayers, or that family in our prayers as we move forward. And I pray that each and every one of you continue to utilize your social distancing, so where your PPEs, it's important that we do that and maintain that moving forward. The work's really just now beginning because the funds have now come in and it's going to be a task to make sure that they are spent properly and that they are applied to the most good. It's important that we went from a fully employed economy to an economy that has fifteen to eighteen percent at a minimum unemployment. And we have the opportunity to use some of these COVID funds to retrain our workforce. But we all understand and know that a lot of these hospitality jobs that were once there will not be there now. And these people, we're feeding them now, but what we need to do is teach them to feed their families. And that's our responsibility as a county mission. Thank you. We appreciate everything that you do and God bless. Commissioner Dyke.
Picking up on that, the unemployment benefits will probably run out. So, you're right on the retraining. Again, our county has continued to function during all of this and kudos to all those employees who's made this happen, that even in the worst of times, government has to continue to provide the services that they provide. And this downturn in the economy is going to affect a lot of cities. We already know about Fairfield. They've already, you know, they've struggled for a bit, but I think this just kicked them off the ledge. So, we'll see what happens there. And I look forward to the process, to how we allocate these, these funds for the CARES Act. Hopefully, there'll be other actions by the US Congress to maybe help cities and maybe reconsider some of their thoughts about allowing lost revenues to be at least thought about. But our process, you know, let the light shine on it so that we do it the right way and don't even have to worry about the feds coming to visit, you know, years down the road and saying, hey, that wasn't properly done. We want it to be transparent. We want it to be out there. And so, we look forward to the county team continuing to develop that. The last thing is, is the CDC and their guidelines, remember when this all came? Uh, the last thing is, is the CDC and their guidelines, remember when this all king, this started? He said, "Don't wear a mask." Now they're saying, "Wear the mask." Yesterday, they came out with a, a new perspective and saying, "Well, we don't really believe contact on the surface is the real culprit here. We think it's more just person to person." So they're, they're backing off on that. Again, it's a new virus. We're living history. We don't know where this is going. But we have to try to do the best we can to prepare ourselves for whatever's coming down the road. So thanks again to the team, you guys that's done it. Thanks.
Mr. Jones.
I want to take this off, because, at least to speak. You know, wipe down that surface first.
You know, it, it's important to know that the mask, if you have COVID, it keeps you from spreading. Unless you got an N-95, you're not going to, and I see a couple of them out there. Good for y'all. Uh, you're, that keeps you from getting it. The other keeps you from getting it. So.
Well, if I've got one on, I'd rather have my mask on than somebody calls that at least I don't get a direct shot to the gullet if I get on my mask.
You got an N-95, Joe.
I know I do.
Uh, I think, I think it's important, and, and you've heard it over and over again here about, you know, continuing to be safe and be diligent. And it's sure good to see the economy open, open up again, and we see some, some, you know, revenues coming back through and people are getting out, but that's also worrisome. And I don't want to, you know, I don't want to be alarmist, but if you looked at the numbers yesterday, they went up significantly for one day. Our, our trend has been to where it's, it's actually coming down and it, and it continues to. But I think, uh, the, the not-so-gentle reminders of a number, a good number of new cases in the state and the county yesterday. And, and who knows what's in the numbers, if they've changed the way they've done it or, or what. But it's, it's a good reminder that we need to be diligent. And, um, you know, congratulations to our graduates. But they're also going to want to go to some graduation parties, and we need to make sure that they're being safe because they're, you know, they're just as vulnerable as, as some of the rest of us. So we all need to be diligent about, about what we're doing and where, uh, and how we're being, um, uh, careful in, in social distancing, like everybody's already talked about, um, uh, moving forward. And, um, I wasn't going to say anything at committee yesterday or the other day, but she put it on Facebook. If you guys would keep Danielle from my office in your thoughts and prayers. Uh, she went under the knife yesterday. And as of last night, was resting peacefully, uh, drug-induced, uh, prescribed by a doctor though. And, uh, she's, uh, uh, doing well, and, and hopefully she continues to do well. That's the end of mine. I'm sorry.
We go further business, just making it for a survey. Please sit in the front.